Okay, we're live.
We're live, good to go. All right, great. Thanks, Andy. Hello, everyone, and welcome to the seven o'clock new report zoning board of appeals meeting for September 8, 2020 via Zoom. My name is Mark Moore, Vice Chair, calling the meeting to order. As our chair, Rob Champetti can't be here tonight. Luckily, again, for all on this call, especially me, we have City Planning Director Andy Port driving the presentation visuals and managing the participation of attendees, as well as City Planner Caitlin Sullivan. I also want to introduce our note taker Gretchen Joy, as we always want to recognize her efforts. I will start with the roll call to ensure that we have proper quorum. As I mentioned earlier, I am Mark Moore, Vice Chair, obviously in attendance. And Rob Champetti, our chair is absent. I'll now introduce each member and ask that they respond with here. Secretary Stephen Delisle.
Here.
Member Rachel Webb.
Here.
Member Ken Swanton.
Here.
Associate Member Walter Tagnan.
Here.
And I said, I'm here. So we have five members present. We have a quorum and we can proceed with the meeting. Now do a quick overview of how we do this. For those new to the zoning board meetings and or new to the Zoom format as we deal with the Rona, we find it helpful to describe the format of the meeting and how it will flow before the public hearings. The board starts with this business meeting, which typically has minor modifications to prior approvals are contemplated in the minutes from the prior meetings are approved. Tonight, we have minutes to approve and a consideration of an extension. After the business meeting is completed, we close that section and move on to public hearings for this portion. I start by reading a brief description of public notice to identify the application to be presented and discussed. I will then ask the applicant to present their case, for lack of a better word. And often it's the applicant's legal counsel or the applicant's architect or designer that will present the proposed changes to the property. Once the presentation is complete, we then move on to the reason why these gatherings, although virtual now, are called public hearings. We have public comment. I will ask any public attendees who wish to comment on a proposal to do so. It's a vital part to making these public hearings a robust exchange of thoughts and ideas. I will start by asking anyone in virtual attendance who wishes to comment in support of the application to raise their hand electronically using the mouse and cursor to utilize the raised raise hand icon in the attendee window on your computer. Andy Port will announce those that wish to speak in favor, and please remember to unmute yourself before you start to speak. We asked that before starting to comment, you provide your name and address clearly for the record. Try to keep your comments succinct and to the points that others who may wish to comment can efficiently participate. Once we find that there is no one left who wishes to speak in support of an application, I will then ask for those who oppose to raise their hand electronically and give their name and address and be heard. When those that oppose have been heard, we then ask for anyone else maybe doesn't feel strongly either in support or in opposition, but wishes to be heard to raise their hand and state their name and make their comment. Once all the public comments have been heard, that portion of the hearing is closed and we move on to questions from the board. The board sometimes inspired by public comments will then question the applicant or any one of their team to flesh out further detail to aid in the decision making. Once the board has exhausted their questioning, they close that portion of the meeting and move on to deliberations. Deliberations in the public forum is the cornerstone of a public hearing format. Everything the board discusses about the application is done in public so that all in attendance get to hear the thought process of each member and the board as a whole, as it moves towards a decision during the process. It sometimes becomes evident that the board may feel it either needs more information or is leaning in opposition for one reason or another. And we as a board will move to continue the application until we can obtain the information needed or give the applicant an opportunity to ask for a continuance to address any concerns before closing deliberations and going to a formal vote, which has consequences for the applicant with respect to timing and cost. Once deliberations are complete, I then seek a motion from the board and when seconded, a vote will be called. Because we use Robert's Rules of Order, you'll hear a motion on the application made in the affirmative order approved, even if a board member making the motion plans to vote to deny. If the application passes, the happy applicant moves on. Excuse me, I will then close that application and move on to the next, applying all the same rules. Okay, got the roll. We have a quorum. We can move forward. I will now open the business meeting tonight. The business meeting consists of approval of the minutes from the eight twenty-five meeting. Does anyone have any questions or corrections or comments? Speak now, River, hold your peace. Okay, hearing none. And we have a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes, Rachel Webb of zoning board adjustment meeting of August 25.
A second attempt, Swanton.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the the meeting minutes by Ms. Webb, second to Mr. Swanton. I will now pull the members. Mr. Champetti is absent. Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Swan.
Yes.
Mr. Tagnan.
Yes.
And I am yes as well. So all in the affirmative, the minutes were approved. Okay, next, as a board, we will continue the business meeting by considering a request for an extension for 23 Overlook Street, 2018 dash forty-four. We received a request for a one-year extension from the applicant, Mary Ann Pedalaro. As due to COVID issues among others, she's been unable to line up the process necessary to complete the work by September 2020 deadline. Since the only, since only, the only one on the board on the two thousand eighteen application is our chairman who's absent, I'll briefly note that this was a special permit to allow for teardown and rebuild of a single family home on Plum Island. The original granted permit was in fifteen, but expired before exercise in seventeen. A new permit was granted to the previous owner in eighteen. Does Ms. Pedalaro care to address the board on reasons for the request?
Um, yes, I just, I just like to ask for an extension. Due to COVID closures of businesses, delays of the planning of construction and other setbacks. We have been unable to get everything in order for construction to start on time.
Okay, thank you. Is there any comments or questions from the board?
I have a, I have a question, Mr. Chairman. It's Rachel Webb. Actually, it's more of a question for the staff, Andy and Caitlin. I'm just wondering what the precedent is for this kind of an extension of a certain criteria the applicant needs to make or anything is we've not, I don't believe we've had one of these kind of requests before.
Yeah, I think in just in general, it's the board's reasonable discretion to determine whether or not, you know, obviously if someone was asking in the first six months for an extension, I think that would not probably make a whole lot of sense, but you know, seeing how unusual things are with COVID right now and probably getting contractors and whatnot, I don't think it's you know, out of the unusual to ask for extension here, but I think certainly as long as the board has, I think, a reasonable rationale put before it as to why an extension is needed. And there's no particular dispute over the, you know, the application or need to to think no new permitting might be needed for the project, then I think extensions are generally, you know, acceptable in an order, and I've most often seen them granted by boards unless there's a particular concern with a project.
And is the granting, just in follow up, is the granting of the extension typically for a set period of time?
Well, I mean, generally speaking, it's most boards will just say, you know, granting of a one-year extension. So that would just grant one year from the date it was originally issued. And that's how I would recommend proceeding. If you're going to grant an extension, just, you know, granting the requested one-year extension or whatever it may be.
Okay, so it's one year from when it expires. Yep.
Right, exactly. They're only getting the benefit of one additional year from the date that they would have gotten originally.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have a question? Any, any discussion or deliberation on this? I know, I think we're in part of one extension already before we went into the to the COVID meetings. I mean, you know, the COVID Zoom meeting, so.
I mean, I'll comment, I'm Ken Swanton. I mean, I think it's reasonable, given what's going on right now in our world. That COVID could slow a project down, so I don't really have any problem with this.
I would agree with that as well. Is there any other discussion on the the extension?
This is Mr. Delisle. I'll agree with Mr. Swanton and Mr. Moore that this seems like a reasonable request under the circumstances.
Let's do it.
All right, let's do it. Try your motion.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion.
This is Mr. Delisle. I'll make the motion to approve the one-year extension request for the special permit for nonconformities for 23 Overlook Street, file number 2018 dash zero four four.
Do we have a second? I'll second that. All right, Mr. Tagnan seconds it. Motion made by Mr. Delisle, second by Mr. Tagnan. I will call for the vote. Mr. Champetti absent. Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Swan.
Yes.
Mr. Tagnan.
Yes.
And Mr. Moore, yes. All in the affirmative, the extension is granted. And now you're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, so that concludes the the business meeting. I now move on to our public hearings. Our first application on the agenda is from Ryan McShara of Red Barn Architecture and Lisa Mead of Mead, Tellarmine and Costa for the property located at 468th Street, owned by Holly McDonald, application 2020 dash thirty. It's a special permit for nonconformities as the applicant seeks to demolish and rebuild an existing nonconforming single-family home at this location with an additional 639 square feet and parking below. The application has been continued several times, most recently at eight twenty-five meeting. The board has voiced concern in the past with respect to the floor area ratio or far as it pertains to the pieod. And the applicant was asked for and has provided additional detail with respect to close neighbor far comps. Might we again hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Lisa Mead, Mead, Tellarmine, Costa, on behalf of Holly and Jeff McDonald. And as you noted earlier, I'm with Ryan this evening, who is the architect on the project. I have a number of slides here. I'm not going to go through all of them. I have them in case the board wanted them for reference, but I might remind the board just of a couple of things that may have gotten lost in some of the past information. And then I think that we've straightened out what seems to have been a calculation error regarding FAR calculations, and I'll go through that as well. So this property is owned by Holly and Jeff. Holly's lived in this property with her family as a summer home since nineteen eighty-one. So she, she spent a lot of time here. She spent her childhood summers here, and now she and her husband Jeff own it with their family. Their goal is to improve this home. So it lasts long into the future for Jeff and Holly and their family to eventually live full-time, but certainly in the summertime in this home. As a result, and interestingly, it's a little, it's a little awkward under the pieod, but it's both a special permit for nonconformities because the structure is going up and is exceeding the height of the existing structure, but also in that same section, it is a request for a special permit for FAR over twenty-five percent. And we'll talk about that in a little bit. Andy, if you could go to the first slide, please. So just as a reminder, the existing conditions, the the property is in the pieod, it's preexisting nonconforming for lot area, frontage, front yard setback, and I'm going to call the side B setback because that's important in a little while. Otherwise, the property conforms what's left of it. And you go to the next slide, please. So here are the existing conditions and the proposed conditions. So what you can see is that we're actually moving a structure to the middle of the lot and complying with all side setbacks and improving side setback B. It will continue to be nonconforming, but it will be improved by just about eight feet. So that's an important calculation. And additionally, the open space will remain at eighty-four percent. So it's right now at eighty-nine percent. So there's a five percent change there, but it far exceeds the open space requirement. Go to the next slide, please. Just a reminder, here is the existing house. The living space is all on the first floor of this house. There's a little deck on the top floor and there's an old chimney on the side. So you go to the next slide, Andy. Again, this is in the context of the neighborhood down 68th Street from Northern Boulevard. And the next slide. And as a reminder, these are the existing conditions. You can go right through these, Andy. So the proposed project is to demolish that existing nonconforming single-family home, construct a new home elevated on pilings with parking underneath. The increase in the FAR we're requesting is from point two one to point three two. We eliminate the front yard setback issue. We reduce the side yard setback nonconformity. As I mentioned earlier, we maintain the open space and it then complies with all other dimensional requirements. I will add here that last week, the Conservation Commission approved this project. So the Conservation Commission approved the redesign of the project. This is the site plan. This hasn't changed at all, but you can see here where we bring that left side nonconformity into a little bit more compliance. It was at least a little more than ten feet, which is, that's the minimum under for a new building under the pieod. And you go to a new slide, Andy. So this is the bottom floor, and then we've got the first floor plan next, please. And the second floor plan. And as you can see, this is not a dramatically large project. It has eight hundred fifty-five square feet existing. The proposed is fourteen hundred ninety-four. It's certainly not ostentatious. It's very similar to a lot of the other newly constructed homes on Plum Island, constructing them in accordance with the FEMA standards, the resiliency standards and the Conservation Commission rules and regulations by lifting them up out of the dune. And you go to the next slide, please. Keep going through it. So the height of the house is thirty-two feet mean, just so you know. And that, of course, a lot is driven by the lifting of the of the first level. And go to the next slide. So what's interesting about the new report ordinance with regards to the pieod is that you're allowed to alter, reconstruct or extend or change the floor area upon the grant of a special permit. As you, as the board is fully aware, if you are permitting anything else in the rest of the city other than Plum Island, and there are dimensional requirements, and you're not preexisting nonconforming, and you want to exceed the dimensional requirements, it requires a variance. But on Plum Island, there are certain things that you can do by special permit as opposed to variance. And one of those things is to increase the floor area ratio, even if it already meets the requirements of the floor area ratio dimensional requirements. I think there were a lot of reasons to do that, namely the size of the lots on Plum Island. For a livable house certainly lend itself to doing that, but the board is given the discretion to use a special permit criteria, that is, whether it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and to the pieod by granting a special permit as opposed to requiring an applicant to prove that they can meet the variance standards. And I just wanted to remind the board that Plum Island differs in that particular area. So what is the, how do you calculate the FAR? Again, what's interesting about the island is that it's gross floor area, not living space. So it's from the outside of the building. You might recall, and I actually happen to have been attending this meeting, that the staff in the zoning office noted that originally the gross floor area calculation for the proposed property was incorrect because it was based upon the living area. So it was recalculated by Ryan and his group, and they did it on the gross floor area. So the gross floor area calculation, which is the FAR calculation is point three two. And if you could change the slide, Andy. So again, this is the standard under the pieod, which is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or to the pieod. And so in this instance, we believe that the project, proposed project, both the change in the side yard nonconformity and the increase in the pieod is not more substantially more detrimental to either the neighborhood or the pieod for the following reasons. First, we're maintaining a single-family home, of course. And in a minute, I'm going to show you how the FAR is actually consistent with the surrounding homes. We eliminate the front yard setback. We improve the side yard B setback. We were maintain the the doubling of the required open space. We don't double the open space, but the open space is more than twice what's required, I should say it that way. And we elevate the home to the preferred standards of the flood zone, taking the house out of the dune and making it more resilient, which of course is part of what everybody is trying to do. And as again, I note that the Conservation Commission has approved this modification to the structure. Now importantly, and if you could go to the next slide. Again, I was able to watch the last meeting because I had another hearing, and there was some confusion about, A, what was the neighborhood? And B, really, how did the the proposed structure compare to the rest of the neighborhood? So the proposed structure here is the gray one in the middle. And so what we did is we took all the surrounding homes and then one surround, one home away from the surrounding homes to to call it the neighborhood. And then I double-checked the math. And what we determined was that, in fact, when the original calculation was done, the map that you all received last time, and I was curious when I was watching it, I was like, wow, how can that, how can an area of Plum Island be that far under the FAR requirements? And the reality is, it wasn't. It was based upon living area and not gross floor area, which is how you calculate the FAR. So in this instance, this is now calculated consistency. We are comparing apples to apples. So the FAR for the proposed lot is point three two. All of those houses in red are over point three two. I just want to make sure I don't misstate that. Yeah, so there's eleven that have FARs that exceed point three two. I will just note for clarification's sake, that number fifteen on the plan is actually misaddressed in the table. The table says its address is nine seventieth, but of course that is ten sixty-eighth, but the calculation is correct. I just wanted to point that out. That's the neighbors of Holly and Jeff. Six properties, that is the ones in blue, have an FAR that exceed point two five or are under three point three two. So the blue ones have something that's point two five. And then, so as a result, and then the yellow ones are the ones that are under the point two five. As a result, twenty-three immediate neighborhood properties, seventeen of the twenty-three are equal or greater than the FAR required. And eleven of that number exceeds point three two. So I think that you can see that based upon this example, that of the neighborhood, certainly a point three two is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or to the pieod as far as that is concerned. But more importantly, this house will be actually constructed. We talk a lot about, you know, whether there should be properties constructed on the island or new construction, but new construction is allowed on the island. And what's important about this particular piece of new construction, it actually complies with all the FEMA and resiliency standards by bringing that house up out of the sand. There's going to be a house there no matter what. The question is, does it comply with the resiliency standards? The Conservation Commission, and the answer here is yes. And is it consistent or not substantially more detrimental, not even consistent, but substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure? And we believe that in this instance, it is certainly not only not substantially more detrimental, but consistent with the surrounding neighborhood and that in the pieod. And with that, we request that the board now with this new information approve the special permit for nonconformities and allow an FAR to exceed point two five and go to point three two. And thank you for your time again.
Thank you, Attorney Mead. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on behalf of the applicant? Okay, so now I'm going to seek a public comment. Again, as a reminder, we have to use the the electronic raise hand portion of the attendee screen, but is there anyone out there that would want to speak in favor of this application? Please raise your hand electronically. And seeing none, Chair. All right, hearing seeing none. I will ask for anyone that is opposed to this application to please raise your hand electronically and be heard. And we have Tara Komet. If you'd like to unmute yourself on your end.
Yeah, can you guys hear us?
Yes.
So we're just.
So we're not, we're number fifteen on that that map. And I just want, I was wondering what the values were to use to determine the FAR on that? If it was just lot number ten sixty-eighth? Because we actually have number eight and number ten. And I have a hard time believing that our FAR exceeds the the standard.
That I would have to ask Attorney Mead, do you have a?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would turn that over to Ryan, who did the calculation.
Okay.
Yeah, we used publicly available data from the assessor's office, which had the gross floor area for the property listed at thirty-four hundred square feet and the lot in question at about just over nine thousand square feet.
Right. Well, no, I don't know how you get the thirty-one hundred square feet or whatever it was. That would be a strange number to come up with, but it's fine. I was just wondering if you where you got the lot values from.
From the assessor.
Correct. But I just want to make sure because we're ten sixty-eighth, but we're actually eight and ten. That's, that's all I was wondering.
But if I could, Mr. Chair, that's a double lot. So that's the nine thousand square feet that Ryan talked about.
That's where the name comes from. Anyone else opposed or any other comments that you might have, Ms. Komet?
Nope, we just wanted to make sure.
Clarify that. Okay, fair enough. No other hands, Chair. Okay, and again, anyone in general that just wants to be heard on this, please electronically raise your hand.
Mr. Chair, I might remind the board, when I was listening to this last time, there were at least one neighbor, if not more, that spoke in favor of the application.
I do recall that. Thank you. I think it was the next door neighbor on the street.
Yeah.
No other hands, Chair. Okay, so we'll close public comment and go with questions from the board. And just to make it simple, I'll just go around the horn again, and I'll start with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I have no questions. I was among the group that asked for the additional FAR study to be conducted by Mr. McShara, and upon seeing the results this time, I have no further questions with regard to this matter.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Webb?
Um, I want to applaud the applicants in providing the ZBA with the revised data as we requested. I think a picture is worth a thousand words, and that exhibit A really tells it all. I think this is probably a discussion for another time, but I think it would, it just. For me, the the fact of the data being mapped was very dynamic, and it made me wonder if we couldn't get this kind of information for the entire Plum Island by asking the assessor's office to add the calculation in their assessor's data and add it to a GIS layer. Because it's just a very straightforward calculation. But anyway, that's, that's a discussion for another time. I just wanted to commend the applicant. I think they did an excellent job with what we were asking of them.
Thank you, and I think that is definitely a suggestion worth deliberation at another point, at another point. Mr. Swan, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. That critical chart that we looked at, that we'd asked for, for a couple of meetings, that shows the FAR for the surrounding houses. Andy, you showed the colored lots. Could you just slide over to the same page and look at the numbers themselves, please?
It is unfortunately in the presentation version of this, a little bit hard to read. Trying to think if there's another copy of this that's more legible.
I guess that's my point. I can't read any of this data. I mean, I tried to, I looked at some of the assessor's data. I didn't get some of this information, and the data that was provided, I can't read. I mean, I understand the chart, the chart's interesting, but the data behind it is a blur. So I was wondering if you have a better version of it in in what you have seen here? That version here, I can't, maybe my eyes aren't as good as the rest of yours, but I can't read that.
So here's what we can do, I think. Ryan, do you have this chart in front of you?
I do.
Mr. Swan, would you like to ask him to read through it? Because I'm, I think we're happy to do that. We can absolutely.
I just don't, reading through all those numbers, there's a lot of numbers on that page. I'm just saying, I this was the critical piece of the whole information here, and I actually looked up a bunch of these. this was the critical piece of the whole information here, and I actually looked up a bunch of these myself. And I, I didn't get the same information. Maybe I did it wrong. I don't know. But I can't tell from what was provided, um, because I can't read this. So it's just, it's a, I don't know. I'm just saying, I can't read it. That's all.
Um, if I could, Mr. Swanton, the, um, it, it's interesting because of course everything is submitted. So that I, I understand that this is blurry. I'm looking in my hand, I have, uh, the one that we submitted to the board, um, both electronically and in hard form. So I don't know if you have that in front of you and you can't read that either.
I have what I downloaded off the town's website and it looks just like what I'm looking at in the Zoom meeting.
So, uh, Andy, this is Caitlin. You may wanna, if you're able to go to the, um, ZBA agenda item. Um, and they're actually, their supplemental filing is a little bit clear.
Is it at the same page?
It does have the same page, but it's, it's much clearer than this.
Okay. Oh, let me.
Okay. It's still small, but it's clear.
I might add that this Rachel Webb, that, um, I enlarged it several times in order to read the numbers on the screen and that helped a lot.
So we're happy to, um, I think Andy's going to pull it up. Uh, we're happy to, um, to read them as well, because I have what we filed with the board in front of me, um, and I can read it. And I know that that's what Caitlin's asking to have pulled up. And Ryan has it as well.
Yeah, I have it up on my screen. If you'd like me to share a screen.
There we go.
It's, uh, I mean, I can read that. I don't know if the others can read it, but I can read the numbers.
So was there a particular question, Mr. Swanton, that you had?
Well, like for example, like say 568th Street. Um, just to pick one. The, which one is that? It's, it's up here.
First one.
And the first one. So the gross square footage is 704. And I guess they have a net square footage of 528, but we're looking at gross these days. And then, okay, so that's point one seven. So that first group are the ones that are sort of in compliance with the FAR, the one through four.
Yes.
Okay. I must admit, when I looked at this, I did the same thing you guys did first time around. I looked at the net, the net square footage rather than the gross, and every single house was in compliance except for one that was a budding.
Right.
When you look at the gross, you get, you do get a different number.
Right.
So that is helpful. I just, um, I'm sorry to take the committee's time with this. I wish I'd found this page earlier, because I really, I was just trying to study this blurry thing in the presentation, trying to make sense out of it. Anyway, thank you for showing that. I appreciate it.
No problem.
So basically what it says is that out of 23 houses that you've looked at, the FAR, I mean, we might as well tell the city council, the FAR is useless because everybody's above it. Is that basically what you're saying?
In this particular neighborhood, Mr. Swanton, uh, most not, certainly not 11, uh, what did, uh, so 11, 17 of the 23. So there's 17, yeah. So there's six that are in compliance, right? Five or six that are in compliance. Um, I don't think, I think it's an interesting measurement. I think that when FAR was done, uh, for the island, nobody else had it in the city. And it was a way to allow people to use their properties, but not to overbuild on them. Because for example, if 40% block coverage or open space is allowed, that's a, that's a big house, right? So how do you, how do you control it other than that? And you put an FAR on it? So, but that, so it's a balance. I mean, there was a lot of factors that went into the pie odd when it was adopted. A, how can a person use their lot if they already have a host on it or they're pre-existing on it? But B, how do you control that? And I think this was the best tool that existed in 2002-ish. And, you know, certainly like every other aspect of zoning, maybe you want to look at it again, but, um, it, it is what it is. And the island has always been dense and this is proof of it.
And the island is getting a lot denser. But anyway, thank you for your, uh, clearer picture. I appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Chag, uh, Mr. Swanton. Mr. Chagman, do you have any questions?
All right. I've got no questions, but again, I'd like to applaud the applicant for, uh, bringing the, the, the data and the, uh, the picture, the map overlay. And, uh, one thing that was very interesting in looking at this was, uh, how many homes were extremely above, uh, point two five? I mean, some of this data is point five five, point six four, point seven oh, point seven seven. But I think our initial, um, expectation probably holds true that, uh, there is a, a density issue out there in the pie odd. But no, I've got no other questions. And again, thank you, uh, thank you to the applicant for putting this together.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chagman. Uh, I, I don't have any questions again. As I say, I appreciate the, the info. That really was the focus of the last couple of meetings has been provided and, and certainly being able to see it a little more clearly here. I thought it was a factor of my, my, uh, laptop, but, um, I certainly don't have any further questions. So with that, uh, we can move to deliberations. And again, as always, focus around pie odd restrictions, requirements in concert with regular requirements of granting special permits, which includes, uh, looking at the FAR with respect to more, um, substantially more detrimental, uh, than others. So in deliberations, I guess we'll, we'll do the same thing. We'll just go in order and, and get a, a sense of, um, where everyone stands here, Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Uh, in light of the, um, the information provided, uh, tonight, to the, to the zoning board, um, I can move forward in supporting this application. I think that, um, the overall, uh, presentation was, was, was good. And I think that we have met the, the, uh, requirements of section 11G for A and B. I don't know if we need to go through all those, but I do think that, um, we are able to go forward here. At least I am with, uh, with granting this application.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Ms. Webb?
I agree with Mr. Delisle that, uh, you know, given the data presented in the FAR calculations tonight and the mapping specifically, the fact that the application is proposing to improve the dimensional non-conformities that exist today and make them better. In addition to, I think in a prior meeting, there was letters of support or comments of support from the neighbors. The overall character of the neighborhood kind of supports what, um, the, the tone and the scale of what they're proposing to build. I can support this application.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Swanton?
Uh, well, I really don't want to, but, uh, I kind of agree with my colleagues that based on the chart we're all looking at here, it's hard to tell this one person, they can't be like almost everybody else in the neighborhood. So I can support this.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Mr. Chagman?
Uh, I, I agree with the, uh, the other members of, uh, the board. I think this data shows that, uh, we can clearly state that it's no more detrimental to the existing neighborhood. And I can support the application.
Thank you, Mr. Chagman. And, and for all the reasons that, that's already been, uh, discussed, but I'll, of course I'll reiterate them. I appreciate the, the new information. It, you know, we asked for the data. We got the data confirms that in the immediate neighborhood, you can't look at this. I don't think, uh, specifically from size massing or even afar and say that it's substantially more detrimental, at least in my mind. So, uh, the FAR is not a, it's an imperfect number. There's only two ways it can be affected. And then the denominator can never be affected because it's, the lot size is what the lot size is. So, um, it's, it's a, a thought to try to control, um, the growth of density out on the island. It's not perfect. And this is another case, but, you know, a lot of those larger numbers, I imagine were done before the FAR was, was kind of a concept to, to try to control. So we do the best we can with, with, uh, the information we have in front of us. Um, so improving some setbacks, um, and not more substantially detrimental from a FAR standpoint, giving the data, given the data we have in front, I can certainly support it. So with that, I'll just be, um, I'll be looking for a motion.
This is Mr. Delisle. I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for non-conformity for 468th Street, file number 2020 dash zero three zero.
I'll second the motion, Rachel Webb.
Okay. So you have a motion, uh, to approve made by Mr. Delisle, seconded by Ms. Webb, and I'll poll the members for a vote. Again, Mr. Champity is absent. Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Chagman?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Mr. Moore is a yes. Also, all in the affirmative, uh, the application is approved.
Thank you very much, members of the board.
You're welcome. Okay. Uh, the next item on our agenda is an application from Windward Shaw, care of Lisa Mee, Talia Mancosta, for a property located at 68 Middle Street, application 2020, uh, dash 53. Applicant seeks a special permit for non-conformities in order to remove a later added one-story addition at the rear and replace it with a conforming two-story addition, resulting in a four-family use becoming a three-family use. It's my understanding that the applicant is requesting a continuance to our 10 13 meeting after constructive meetings with the butters. And can you confirm that, Attorney Mead?
That is correct, um, Mr. Chair. And I appreciate the board's indulgence on this additional continuance. But, um, with COVID, it's been difficult to meet with, um, all of the neighbors. But, um, this weekend, the applicant was successful in doing that, and it has resulted in some changes. So we do request a, and a continuance to that October meeting.
Understood. Uh, does anyone have any questions on that or does anyone have a motion?
I'll make a motion. It's Rachel Webb to, um, continue the application of 68 Middle Street, case number 2020 dash zero five three for special permit for non-conformities to ZBA meeting of October 13th.
I'll second the motion. This is Bud Chagman.
Okay. We have a motion to continue, uh, made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Mr. Chagman, to move, to continue this, uh, to a meeting on their 10 13, 2020. So I'll call the vote. Mr. Champity is still absent. Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Chagman?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So the, uh, the application is going to be continued to our 10 13 meeting. And as it is not a public meeting tonight, we will not be looking for public comment. Move on to the next set of applications on the agenda. Are from Joel and Mary Beth Martins of 50 Bayberry Road, a dimensional variance, 2020 dash 56 for an in-law suite. Special permit allowing for use 109 for said in-law suite, which is 2020 dash 57. And a special permit for non-conformities, 2020 dash 62, in order to construct an addition of over 500 square feet to a pre-existing non-conforming single family home. So my understanding that the applicant has requested a continuance on all three applications until our 10 27 meeting. But I don't see the applicant listed as speaker tonight. Just to be sure though, is the app, is the applicant on or does anyone like to, that represents the applicant, want to confirm this?
And not seeing anyone in the audience.
Okay. So given that it's been communicated with our office, um, that they wish to continue, uh, and they're not here. I would say that, uh, if we can get a motion from the board, we can just continue this to our 10 27 meeting.
I'll make the motion. This is Mr. Delisle, uh, making a motion to continue the applications for, uh, variance. That's application number 2020 dash zero five six. Application for in-law special permit, that's application number 2020 dash zero five seven. And application for special permit for non-conformities, that's application number 2020 dash zero six two for 50 Bayberry Road, uh, to the meeting of October 27th, 2020.
I'll second it, Ken Swanton.
Okay. So we have motion made by Mr. Delisle, seconded by Mr. Swanton to grant the request to continue all three of these applications as enumerated by Mr. Delisle to the 10 27 meeting. And I now call a vote. Mr. Champity absent. Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Chagman? And Mr. Moore, I am a yes as well. All votes in the affirmative. Uh, the request to continue has been granted. Moving on to the fourth application of the night. It's from Scott Stick of 39 Beacon Avenue, 2020 dash zero five eight. It's for dimensional variance in order to construct a pool within a required front yard setback on a corner lot. Might we hear from the applicant?
And, uh, Scott, you'll have to unmute on your end as well.
Oh, I got you. I, I unmuted my microphone, but then also the, the app. Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for your time this evening. We're looking to install an in-ground pool in our, our backyard or our property, I should say. And it's, uh, we think it's consistent within fellow neighbors, uh, use of land. But we are on a corner lot on Beacon and, uh, Avenue and Riley Avenue. And when our house was built, the front door was positioned facing Beacon Avenue, and our address is 39 Beacon Avenue. Uh, we've always considered the front of our house or the front yard to be on Beacon. And we positioned, um, our front door and, uh, on that, on that street. And on the Riley, uh, Avenue, um, it's, we consider that are kind of our side yard, although we're a corner lot, I do agree. And so we have a six foot, uh, tall fence that goes along that property line. I've included some, some pictures i- in this application. This is a good picture right there, um, on this slide that shows the, the, kind of the neighborhood. If I could just have you go to slide number 13, it might give you some, or actually you to go down to 17, I apologize. You'll see that this gives you a good, uh, view, uh, of the kind of the street view. Um, so on the top hand left, you, you can see Beacon Avenue, uh, the view of our front property. Um, on the right-hand side, you see that Riley Avenue property line, and you can see the fence, uh, going along that property line. If you scroll down to the next slide, um, you can see a kind of a close-up of that Riley Avenue on the right-hand side. And so, um, if you, so those are just some of perspective, uh, pictures that I've included. We're, we're, uh, in, in the diagrams, you will notice, uh, that an additional 11 foot of town property that is on, it's grass between the property line that, in the existing street. So, yeah, thank you very much. And so if you look at that, there's 11 feet of grass to the actual property line or the fence. And then what we're proposing is on that side on the Riley, to have our, our pool set back 10 feet from the property line. But you get a, a, a feeling of almost 21 feet from the street to the edge of the pool. We have neighbors on Oak and Guild, uh, shown in the, the diagrams as well. If you go to aerial picture, you can see that, um, they have a corner lot, um, with a pool, um, positioned within the 25-foot variance. So there's no noticeable impact. And I actually had no idea they had a pool, uh, until I pulled up an aerial map of the neighborhood. And it, because of, because of the fence blocked that view. Uh, in addition, if you look at the aerial, uh, view of the neighborhood, you will see, uh, front yard variances with homes that have, um, more of a visual impact to the neighborhood. But, you know, um, I don't think that the pool would give you any type of visual notice of noticeable impact. So I don't think it would constitute a, a grant of special privileges inconsistent with other surrounding properties. One of the other points I'd like to make out is we have, uh, a, a beautiful golden maple, uh, or golden cypress. That's over 17 years old. It's 23 feet tall. And it's kind of in the, in the, in their backyard where it's, 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 it would be where we would have to move the pool to begin with. Um, and I would, I really don't want to, uh, obviously remove that tree. Um, it's a beautiful, um, tree that, that gives it, um, character in my backyard as well as great separation from neighbors. You know, gives it nice, uh, visual, uh, separation. So I, I kind of, I, I think that a strict compliance would have no visual impact compared to the proposed placement, you know, of our neighborhood. And so if you require a major change, um, to our backyard, we'd have to rip out the, the patio, the, the, the cypress and a beautiful Japanese maple. We hope you consider our proposed pool position to be reasonable use of our land and conformity with, uh, fellow neighbors. And we opt, and we end up, and I would just, uh, kindly request a variance and appreciate your consideration. Okay. And if you, if you want to maybe just scroll back up, I have a lot planned with some of the, the, the dimensions. And then one final note is, um, I did get, uh, signatures of approval from all the budding neighbors. That's also in this document as well. So, um, we were able to go to all the neighbors and, and, and show them the plans and walk them through everything. And, um, they all had signed an approval of the plans. And I noted in this one. And I noted in this one that 37 Beacon, which is Joan and Mel Nagler, they couldn't sign it because of COVID, but we gave it to them, and they, and they ended up signing it and giving it to us after 48 hours of receiving the document. So.
Very safe. Excellent.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this point, we're going to ask for public comment in addition to the letters that you provided. And I want to check and see if there's anyone online in our virtual public comment and ask for anyone in favor of this that might be listening in, that wants to raise their hand electronically and be heard, please do so now.
Not seeing any hands, Chair.
Having locked them all up with that letter, that's it. All right. Is there anyone listening that is opposed to this that wants to electronically raise their hand and be heard?
And again, no hands, Chair.
All right. Thank you, Andy. And then finally, if is there anyone in general would like to make a general comment, please raise your hand electronically at this time.
Okay, last time, no hands.
Oh, for three. Very good. All right. So with that, we close the public comment, and we go to questions from the board. And again, I'll just keep the same order, because why not? Anyone questions Mr. Delisle? Do you have any questions?
Sure. Mr. Stick, I noticed in the, in the narrative that there was a financial component to this as well, if you needed to relocate the patio or, and truck, and cut down the trees. Could you just speak to that?
Yeah, sure. So there's a well-established patio estimated at around $20,000 that we would have to rip out. And I'm learning as putting in a pool, the patio is more expensive than the pool half the time. So we'd have to rip that out and then replace it to another location. That would be one thing. And then obviously, the Japanese maple, you have to have like six, you know, you want, you don't want to, you can't abut right up to that Japanese maple. So as we shift that pool down to the other, other corner of the backyard, we'd have to cut that Japanese maple, which again is 17 years. And a small story on that is, I thought it was a, we bought that 17 years ago, and I thought it was a dwarf, and it was going to be five feet, and it's huge, and it's beautiful. So that would be a cost impact as well, as well as the Japanese maple that's, you can kind of see it there. That's a 15-year-old Japanese maple, or 17-year-old as well. And so those are the, those are the, the financial impact is really with those, removing of those in, as well as the patio.
Thanks. I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delisle. Ms. Webb, do you have any questions?
Um, I, I just had a question. I was just curious if the fence is actually on the property line, or is it offset?
Um, that, it, it, based on this view, it appears as though it's offset.
Okay.
But the measurements in my plan are based on the property lot, lot, lot lines and the actual, and, in the, the, actually, I had a survey done.
Yes, I saw that from your 2008, or maybe it wasn't, I don't know if you owned the property then, but when you got the special permit to remove the garage and construct the two-story addition.
Correct. Yeah, so that's, that, that, that's actually where the measurements that I, that I submitted are based on the property line, not the actual fence.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I think it's interesting to point out that, you know, being a corner lot, you basically, as defined by zoning, you have two front yards. But clearly, the lot behaves as though, you know, the front yard's on beacon, so just want to point that out.
All right, thank you, Ms. Webb. Anything further? All right, Mr. Swanton, questions?
Yeah, I agree with Ms. Webb that the, in these corner lots, where you're primarily on beacon, that Riley acts as sort of a, not your front yard, even though the zoning says you have two front yards. So I understand your problem, and I understand with a pool, with a fence, it's not all that visible. I guess my one question is, you're kind of close at seven feet to your neighbor on Riley Street, and I couldn't figure out, are they one of the ones that have signed your letter and say they're fine with this?
Yes.
Yeah, that's Jen. She actually was willing to, she just speak.
Yeah, she was actually, she asked me if she should show up, and I said, oh, don't worry about it, but I should have done it. But yeah, she's, yeah, that one right next to me, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's really, that's my only question. Thanks very much.
Sure.
All right, thank you, Ms. Swanton. Mr. Chagman, any questions?
No questions, but I agree with my colleagues, the fact that it's a corner lot makes it a, you know, a unique application where technically Riley's a side, the side yard, even though we call it a front yard. But I can, I can support the application, and I think the presentation was well done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I don't have any further questions. I think, I think all the points or questions that were, that were asked have been sufficient. So I'm going to close the questions from the board and move on to deliberations. And as a reminder, as a board, we structure our deliberations around whether the variance criteria has been met with respect to, and I'll paraphrase a little bit this, just to shorten it, unique conditions, unique to the lot, where the strict application of the provision of the chapter deprives the applicant of reasonable use that these unique conditions are not the result of actions of the applicant as taken subsequent to adopting the zoning chapter, and relief won't constitute special privilege. So keeping that in mind, we move to deliberations, and we'll start with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. In the, looking at the, the items to tick off that Mr. Moore has just run through, I think that certainly with respect to, number one, the conditions and circumstances are unique to the applicant's lot. I think as a, as a corner lot with two front yards, you know, it's not unheard of that this is the case, but this is a situation that is unique in this instance. The strict application of the provisions would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the property. I think that that, that's probably the closest call here, but there's still, I think, enough that has been presented to militate in favor of the applicant with respect to this criteria. The unique conditions are certainly not the result of the actions of the applicant. That's number three. And number four, the relief would not constitute a grant of a special privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the district. I think the applicant has shown that well with respect to the, the lot on Oak Street and the other street that, the name of which escapes me. But I think that the applicant has satisfied the criteria for variance, and I can support this application.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delisle. Ms. Webb?
I agree with the points that Mr. Delisle just iterated. I have nothing further. I do support this application.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Swanton.
I also concur that Mr. Delisle summarized it real well. I have nothing else to add. I support it.
Excellent. We move along. Mr. Chagman?
Yes, I agree. Mr. Delisle did a great job. Thank you. And I can support the application.
Accolades are pouring in from Mr. Delisle. I love it. And I would also agree that he did a fine job of summarizing that, and I would only add that if you, if you had to throw a dart at that aerial about where you would want to put a pool in, that would probably be the place where you'd want to do it. So there's nothing to do with anything with the decision, but just thought, as an aside, I'd point that out. So with that, if there's a motion to be made, I am all ears.
It's Rachel Webb. I'll make a motion to approve the application of 39 Beacon Ave, 2020-058 dimensional variance.
I'll second it, Ken Swanton.
All right, we have a motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Mr. Swanton to approve 2020-58 for dimensional variance, and I will call the vote. Mr. Champetti is still absent. Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Chagman?
Yes.
Moore, yes. All in the affirmative. The application is passed. And the variance is granted.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Enjoy the pool.
You're all invited.
Excellent.
Along with my, along with my abutting neighbors, apparently, so.
They didn't show up. They can't go. Did, is there going to be a heater? That's the question, if there's a heater.
There will be.
Okay, then, I'm in. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, and the final one, application tonight is an application from Eric and Louise Lingerman of 35 Monroe Street, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Teller-Mancosta, application 2020-59, demolition control overlay district special permit to demolish a later added two-story addition and sunroom. Application 2020-60 renovation of an existing structure and construction of an attached garage, and 2020-061 special permit for use 109, an in-law apartment. Might we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Lisa Mead, Mead Teller-Mancosta, 30 Green Street, and your report. With me this evening is Eileen Graff, who is the architect on the project, and Eric and Louise Lingerman, who are the owners. And I believe that Eric's children, Eric and Louise's children are probably on as well, waiting with bated breath. The proposal is to partially demolish a portion of the house, which is in significant disrepair and/or of poor original construction, which we will describe in a bit, and then construct in its place an addition, and then replace the garage with an attached garage and add an in-law apartment. Louise grew up in this house. Her parents lived here for a very long time. They purchased it in 1965. The Toomeys were public servants, and many of you may know them. Mr. Toomey passed away in 2012, and Mrs. Toomey is in a long-term care facility here in town. And Eric and Louise moved back into the house in 2018. Now Eric and Louise's two adult children are also in the house, which is the purpose behind the in-law unit. Both previously shared in apartment have been affected financially by COVID and are now living in the house. The goal is to provide independent living arrangement in the in-law apartment over the garage. As you're going to see in a little bit, the current house is 1,730 square feet, and the proposal is to add an additional 138 sque, square feet in the end for a total of 1,868 square feet to the main house. And then, of course, the in-law at 580 square feet, not including the 25 square feet of the entry area. Again, modest and under what the in-law requirements allow in the city. This is Eric and Louise's home. They're not improving it to flip it. They are improving it in order to keep their family intact and have a place to retire. Property is improved with single-family residence constructed in 1850, according to the assessor's records, and about 1855, according to the district data sheets. There is no Form B. So we're here for a DCOD special permit, a special permit for nonconformities and for the in-law apartment. As the board knows, I'm going to address the DCOD special permit first. As the board knows, we needed to go to the historic commission and have them review our proposed demolition as we're proposing to remove more than 25% of the exterior walls. Also, we had to get a demolition approval for the garage, which they approved. So that's, that's not actually under the board's purview right now. The reconstruction, obviously, with the in-law is, but the, the commission did approve the, the demolition of the garage. So the commission is to make a recommendation to the zoning board before they act, and then the board, of course, acts under the DCOD criteria. So I'm going to go through some of the history because it's important and because it's required under the ordinance and talk about what we're going to do in its place. So there is no Form B. As the board may or may not know, a Form B is an additional form that describes a property. It may make the property rise to another level of importance, or they just may not have ever done it. But in it, so it's on the district data sheets as contributory, but there is no Form B. The structure is described as Italianate in style. And as I noted, and as we noted in our application, the district data sheets indicate the structure was altered in or around 1920. So there is a first-floor sunroom on the property off what is currently the kitchen. The footprint of the sunroom is not on the 2019, 24 assessor's map, indicated it was added at some later date, and indeed, it was added around the 1980s, that sunroom was. The garage does appear on the 1924 assessor's map, but is not listed on the district data sheets. And as I noted, we did get approval from the historic commission to remove the garage and have received a recommendation to the zoning board from the historic commission that the later added portions of the structure to be demolished are of no reasonable use, and that rehabilitation is not reasonably feasible. So just hang on one second, Andy. Don't go any further, if you don't mind. The property is a corner lot at the corner of Broad Monroe Street and is pre-existing nonconforming for a lot area. The R2 district requires a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, and the property measures 7,792. It's, it's pre-existing nonconforming for front yard setback as well. The R2 district requires a minimum front setback of 25 feet. The structure has a front setback of 5.2 on Broad Street. So this too is a corner lot. The board just got done talking about a corner lot at the other end of town. So it has two front yards, Monroe and Broad, and on Broad, it's at 5.2. Otherwise, the structures and the property comply with all the dimensional requirements of the R2 district. So the demolition control overlay district, I'm going to go through those criteria first, provides that the zoning board can make written findings upon substantial evidence in the record that such historic building or structure retains no substantial remaining market, market value or reasonable use. That is the portion that's being demolished. The board's aided in its determination based upon the historic commission's advisory report. I'll note that I included in my package, my filing to the board, both the advisory report and the minutes to the historic commission meeting, because I think the minutes are of importance. As previously noted, the commission did note in their minutes, the report would indicate that the proposed demolition of the two-story addition would not result in a loss of historically significant material due to its condition. And we're going to go over that in a minute. The applicants proposed to demolish the two-story addition extending from the original structure towards the south, and then the later added first-floor sunroom. So let's go through the existing conditions. So the existing two-story addition is two to four feet out of level. The pantry off the kitchen at the southernmost portion of the structure is sinking and does not have a foundation. The pantry from ceiling to floor is under seven feet. While one side of the pantry is on the same plane as the kitchen, the opposite side of the pantry has a five-and-a-half-inch step down. The roof over the pantry is not suitable for snow loads, and the windows on the adjacent addition sit directly on the roof of the pantry, prohibiting renovation of the roof to support snow loads. The materials used in the pantry are inconsistent and underperforming, and I'm going to show you those photos in a second. The kitchen is pulling away from the original structure. A year ago, during an emergency repair, the applicants discovered that bricks in the walls have been taking the place of a rotted two-by-four stud, or studs, plural. Further, it was discovered that the addition has been insulated with newspaper. Floor joists in the kitchen are undersized and sagging, leading to a measurable belly in the middle of the kitchen floor. All of the doorways connecting the kitchen are out of level and do not close. One of the doors is at least two inches out of level. A poorly-built unused chimney is located in the kitchen and leaks. Beneath the kitchen addition is a brick foundation. The applicants have attempted to insulate the walls and the foundation, but still receive significant air throw fluid through the foundation. The brick mortar joists are deteriorating, and a large amount of mortar dust collects annally at the base of the foundation. The building systems for the addition are nearly inaccessible as access is provided through a small crawl space leading from the basement to the original structure, of the original structure. A sewer vent line protrudes through the wall into the stairway space and leads to the roof. The later added sunroom is sinking and pulling away from the kitchen addition. The footings of the sunroom have rotted and are of no concrete footings beneath the cinder blocks. So there are significant issues with the wall foundation between the sunroom and the kitchen addition, as evidenced by the photos. So we're going to start to go through the photos, starting with the site plan and then moving through the neighborhood and the actual conditions themselves. The applicants hired a professional engineer, Thomas Calery, to do a significant review of the condition of the addition in the sunroom that there was a memo from Mr. Calery that was provided to the board and the historic commission. I'm not going to go through that yet. I'm not gonna go through that yet. But I wanted you to know that that, of course, is part of your application, which I hope you have all read through. So if you could go to the next slide now. So here's a site plan, just to orient everybody as we start to go through the photos. So we can see Broad Street and Monroe Street. Currently in the hatch lines, you can see the main house that sits up at the corner of Monroe and Broad. And then the additions on the back, that right there, Andy, that's what's being proposed to be removed. That is the addition, the two-floor addition and the sunroom, and then the deck, and then the garage. And you can see it all kind of carries over to a non-conforming side setback on the Broad Street side. And then you can see the, in the dark line, the proposed addition. That's the garage with the apartment over, the small little connector sunscreen porch there, and then the addition on the side to give some more living space. And if you could go to the next slide, please, Andy. Many of you should be familiar with this, assuming you drive around the North End. So here's the, the house on Monroe Street, and you can see the corner of Monroe and Broad. You can see the, the houses to the rear up Broad Street are significant in size, and we're gonna show you a, a plan in a minute that shows that difference. And then we just thought, part of the application requirements, particularly where you're proposing to take a portion of the house down, is to make sure that the record is replete with evidence of the existing condition. So if you can go to the next slide, please, Andy. So here's what we're proposing to take down. That two-story, kind of two-story, I'm gonna call a story and a half, addition on the rear with the sunroom and that porch thing. That's what's being proposed to be taken down. If you go at the upper right-hand corner, Andy, that's left on my screen. Go to the right-hand corner of this picture. There you go, right there. So you can see more clearly the, with the chimney, that's being proposed to take down in that kind of sunroom kitchen addition on the back as well. If you go to the next slide, please. Again, here's additional photos of the neighborhood, so you can understand what the setting is. A large part of this yard is behind a large hedge on Monroe Street, so you really can't see how far back this sits. And the next slide, please. And so here's our conditions. And Eileen, I'm gonna have you pipe in here at any time that you want. And while we're not here in front of the board for the removal of the garage, it was important to see the condition as well. So, there's the current garage, but then you can see we've marked these, the garage splaying, but then you've got the pulling, the wall pulling away from the addition, the porch pulling away from the addition in the next two photos. Go to the next slide, Andy. So you can see the, inside the kitchen wall and the pantry details. You can see the brick trying to act as a, as a stud in the wall. You can see the different level of the kitchen floor, the drop in the pantry floor in the middle, and of course, the, the drop in the doorway to the addition. Go to the next slide. So you can see the pantry supports. I'm gonna use that in quotes. There's the pantry right side, the porch pulling away from the addition again, and the current porch pulling away from the house. I think that the engineer would tell you, and Eileen, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that this is largely as a result of the insufficient foundation and/or footings on these additions as to why they're starting to list and pull away from the house. Then you can see on the second floor of that addition is actually doesn't have enough head height. That's the bathroom above the kitchen. The top of the stairway is out of level, and then there you've got the vent pipe in the middle of the stairwell. So, as I said, the historic commission made its finding, and the board is required to make a finding that what we're proposing to demolish retains no substantial remaining market value or reasonable use, taking into account the cost of rehabilitation to meet the requirements of the state building code as it applies to historic structures. As I said, the applicants engaged Tom Calery, a professional engineer, to review the structure and determine its condition. That report was provided to the historic commission as well as this board. It has probably 15 pages of photos, most of which we've shown you, some of which we've shown him. Mr. Calery said in his professional opinion noted that the addition is at the end of its useful life, that attempting to salvage this portion of the house is not feasible or cost-effective. Importantly, he said, and I quote, "Due to the age and shoddiness of the existing framing, it is not clear that the structure could be sufficiently stabilized during the jack process. This would lead to the structure shifting or collapsing under its own weight." The historic commission agreed that the poor condition of the later additions to the original structure is described and evidenced by the photos prohibit the reasonable use of those portions of the structure. Further, the amount of rehabilitation required to harmonize the failing additions with the original structure and associated costs are not reasonably feasible. So what do we propose to do? If you could go to the next slide. Eileen, I'm gonna turn it over to you here.
Thank you, Lisa. I'm Eileen Graff, Graff Architects. And what I think I'll do is start with these existing exterior elevations again to help orient. The photos were, as Lisa provided, are very helpful, but I'll just walk through the drawings to reiterate some, some of the information. So the top drawing, you can see that original hip roof structure, the 1850s structure, two-story, and to the right of it, the one-story aspect, all part of the original. And then to the left of that is the gabled addition, which showed up on the 1894 maps, as well as that one-story shed of a pantry. And that's all to the left. Then if you look at the bottom drawing, which is the face along Broad Street, you can see, starting the left side of that bottom drawing, you could see again the original hip roof structure with its one-story hip piece on the Broad Street side. Then if you go to the right of that, you'll see the doorway, and that is part of that gabled two-story or one-and-a-half-story structure addition. So that's the backside of that. To the right of that is that 1980s sunroom addition, and then as you continue on, the decks added, which connect to the garage. And that's on the Broad Street side. If we then slide over to the, thank you, Andy, to the, I guess technically, this is the rear. This is the backside from Monroe. And what we're looking at, again, on the left side, is the two-story original hip with a one-story addition. Then you can see the addition with the chimney on it, with the small kitchen windows double there. And then again, the slider is part of that sunroom, and then behind that slider, a little bit of the pantry. And then the bottom drawing is a, a great example of the pieces that we're trying to clean up. So, going from the left side, that's the garage, and then the deck, the sunroom piece, and then this gabled addition and pantry. And so what I wanna point out in this drawing, because it's, it's a good way to sort of launch into some of the challenges. As you saw in some of the photographs, in particular, I'm thinking of the one with the bathtub, where you can see the space above, in this, the second floor in this gabled end structure. So you would be looking, that bathtub sits in front of these two double-hung windows. What I want to try to convey is this, is the scale of this addition. The, the, the second-floor space in this, in this two-story addition here is really low. And if I can actually move to the original structure as a reference point, the heights in the building are not huge. The first floor, seven foot six and a half, the second floor, seven foot four and a half. So, but manageable. But to give you a reference point, the top of those windows on the second floor are only at five foot seven. So standard windows today are at six foot eight. So giving you a reference point, and, and you know how tall you are and what that height is at five foot seven. Now come over, if, if one were to connect into this gabled addition, you now then step down into that space, you know, six-inch step, and you're in a space where the, underneath that ridge is six foot six max. And then it goes, slopes out to, to end walls that are about four feet tall. So the space is really compromised in a sense of trying to, to turn that into something that could be helpful in these, in these renovations, technically, for, to meet building code. It, a bathroom needs to meet six foot eight, and so this space doesn't even meet that. So, with that, that's, that's, we, we, you know, theoretically, we were try, we were trying to make the renovation work using this structure. And we could have on the, say, potentially on the first floor, but the second floor was really the challenge to our, to our design process. And then I'm gonna flip up to the drawing on top, the rear elevation. And if you could, just look at the addition piece. And i-if you look on the original structure, the double four-over-four windows there, you'll look to the right and you'll see a small dash line. So what I wanna point out is when this 1890s addition came on, they also glommed on this little piece that overlaps to the original structure. And what is difficult about it is, or what we feel is, is unattractive, is the way it sort of gloms on to the original in a way that hides the corner. You know, you lose the definition of the original structure in that. And so if hypothetically, we propose changing the roof and going taller, we still worried about how you connect to the original historical while still giving it the respect it needs. So, we were worried about that condition happening on this corner. So that's why we have decided that it wasn't worth the efforts on the second floor with the structural analysis and the sort of subpar framing and foundation. And to add to the foundation and its, and its failures, what you could see in some of these drawings is that the property slopes pretty significantly, significantly towards the back. And we feel with the, the insufficient foundations, basically, the building is falling down, sort of downhill. And so that seems to be what's happening here. So that was where our minds went, with trying to consider reusing the structure as is. So now if we could flip to a proposed exterior elevation.
Thank you. Finally, just one second before you move on to the proposed. So I, I did include the historic commission report, and there was, we proposed a different style addition and a couple of items that Eileen will talk to you architecturally to the historic commission, and they made comments in their report that they were concerned about the bulk enassing of the addition on the property. And so as a result of that, we went back to the drawing board. You can see that we got our report from the historic commission from their meeting of June 11th, and now it's September 8th, and we're meeting with the board. So we took some time, Eileen took some time with the Lingermans to say, okay, how do we address some of the concerns with the commission in our design? And so I'm gonna turn it over to Eileen to talk about how she has done, made those changes.
Thank you, Lisa. So, if we slide back to the proposed, again, there we go, again, to orient you. Front, front elevation here is on the Monroe side. So, that addition that we were talking about has now been removed. And what you're looking at to the left is a screen porch, and behind that, the garage/in-law addition. Exactly. And so, one of the comments that the historic commission had was about the scale of the, of the, of the addition. And I think the easiest way to explain this is, and you could somewhat see a dash line there. The, the, the depth, the depth or width, in this view, I'll say, from, from the back of the in-law and garage towards Broad Street, that dash line, is 28 feet in length. And the first iteration that we went to historic with was a gable roof that spanned 28 feet. And so, in an effort to bring down some of the massing, what we did instead was create it, instead of a 28-foot-wide building, which half of that, the ridge line, would be at 14 feet, we created what would be a 24-foot. We held the backside, the left of that door, and made a 24-foot-wide garage gable with an, which, and a change in pitch, a shallower pitch to cover the last four feet. And what that did was brought down the height of the building, brought down the mass that's within, and tried to sort of address some of the concerns that they had. It's, it's, it was, the, the point was made, and we understand it's hard when the original structure is also sort of similar in proportions. It's just shy of 24 feet wide. So we felt like staying with the one-and-a-half-story as we are, kept the eve lines down. Again, a narrower gable end helps bring the sort of face, the, the exposed gable face down, and then appropriately a shallower pitch to cut, for the roof to cover, heading towards Broad Street to cover the last four feet. So that was the change in massing. The other change that we did, and, and actually, if we can scroll down to the bottom drawing, thank you. And here we can see it in elevation on the Broad Street side. It's the shed dormer. And we've got, you can see sort of an extra line there, where we've got a change in pitch for the last four feet. It's a shallower pitch, and then the garage doors below. And one other change that you could see on the top elevation, it, there's a screen porch there, and we have a proposed roof balcony there. And the, the historic commission had concerns about the, the, the scale of that as well. So we have pulled that back in size to try to minimize its exposure and, and just have it smaller than the footprint of the screen porch below. And what I wanna also add is that what's, what's sort of deceptive in this flat 2D drawing, this screen porch is pushed 25 feet back from the front face of this original structure. And then if you were to look at the gable end, it likewise is pushed back 40 feet from that front corner. So I wanna give you some idea of the depth on this property that's, that it, that the garage-in-law addition is probably put at the most furthest back corner that you can get get it located within allowable setbacks. So we did as, we did as much as possible to sort of push that back from the corner of Broad and, and Monroe.
I think to give perspective on that, Andy, if you could go back to the site plan. So you can see here, and I'll turn it over to you, because I think this is important, because you can really see how it's tucked back in the corner.
That's correct. And if you see that screen porch, the, the box for the screen porch, the edge, right, is essentially at the back corner of the original structure, right there, exactly. And that is about 16 feet deep. And then if you slide to the left, Andy, then you hit the face, the, the gabled end face of the garage-in-law addition, and that's 42 feet from the front of the original structure, which is another 13.7 feet from the street. So it really has and gives breathing room to the original structure. And, and that was what we were trying to do with a, a light, open-feeling screen porch to connect the two buildings. And then actually, sorry, thank you. This is fine, too. What I wanna point out, too, is the addition on the backside of the original, of the original structure, which is the left side of this top drawing. You can see this, the rear, exactly, the rear door there for the mudroom entrance. You can see this, the rear, exactly the rear door there for the mudroom entry. The two story aspect steps in a foot from each side of the original structure, giving respect to the original, keeping the ridge lines lower than than the original. And again, reiterating that the garage addition is likewise lower in ridge than the original structure. And since the first historic meeting, we brought it down another foot um, for the garage ridge height, just to just to bring it down in scale even more. And on the bottom drawing, you could see what I want to point out is the modified roof deck or balcony, just enough to give a little bit of space to enjoy the morning light. This exposure here is wonderful eastern light, so they wanted to take advantage of that um, and have a quiet space in the morning. Um, and that's how they, and that's how they view the use there. And you'll see a little bit of a covering for the in laws to come and go from that backside. And then if we could, Andy, could we switch to or flip to the renderings to also?
Go to the next slide, Andy. Oh, it's the floor plan. So then the renderings are slide nineteen, I believe. There we go.
Right, so this is the view from Broad Street. And what's it, what's, what's important to note here, once again, and actually the value of putting it in context is the adjacent property. It relative to the addition, relative to the original home. You know, it it really is smaller in scale. So wh- while we are um, trying to create this space, we're trying to keep it smaller in scale than the original home. But mind you, we're starting from a a smaller level, a lower level of 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 height of scale. So if you compare it to a two, two and a half story to the right of it, you can see that it ha, it is a reasonable height and scale. Um, but the challenge is we're next to a a smaller and we're attaching to a a smaller scaled home. But I feel that we've done everything we um, could could possibly do to bring down the height. Again, the importance of a one and a half story, bringing eve lines down helps um, so that you're not looking at two full stories of siding. And then on the other rendering, this is from the Monroe Street elevation, coming up the street towards Broad. And you could see the left side is the gabled end with the dormers showing the in law suite, shed dormers, and then the um, modified roof deck there um, over the screen porch. And this actually highlights even more so the corner board of the original structure and the start of the screen porch right there. So you could see how far back that is. And then uh, the step back all the way to the gable end of the in law. And I believe that is it for my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have regarding the proposed.
Thank you, Eileen. So if you could go to the next slide, Andy, please. So that, so we believe that we've met the criteria for the DCOD special permit to allow us to remove the those two rear additions, uh, one being of the pantry and the kitchen and bathroom area. And the other, the porch that, the sun porch that was built in the uh, in nineteen eighty. We believe that that's been supported by a professional independent opinion uh, from Calory Consulting Independent, we hired him obviously, but um, from a professional point of view, uh, and that has been supported as well by the Historic Commission. I think in this particular one, given the amount of evidence we presented, it's, uh, I don't even think it's a close call relative to the condition of that rear portion of the of the structure. So the next permit would be the special permit for nonconformities. The criteria under ninety two is whether there'll be an addition of a new nonconformity and whether the proposed change will not be substantially more detrimental uh, to the neighborhood than the preexisting nonconforming structure. As we've noted before, there will be no new nonconformity. Of course, we fixed the nonconformity on the garage side. Uh, the front yard setback will be extended. Uh, that's the Broad Street uh, five point two. It will be extended slightly and actually it pulls away from the um, Broad Street area, but it still continues to be nonconforming. We believe that the proposed changes will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the preexisting nonconforming structure. Um, as you can note from the plans, the applicant applicants removing a later added sunroom and existing porch. Uh, the DAX structure, which has over the years grown to connect, almost connect to the existing garages, falling down into disrepair. The applicant is proposing to construct an attached garage, which is more compact uh, than the existing situation and actually pulled back further away from the original structure. The garage will be located closer to the house than the existing standalone garage and will result in that compact design. Um, and will relieve that five foot setback um, that currently exists on that side of the property. The newly constructed home will include eighteen hundred and sixty eight square feet, which is an increase of a hundred and thirty eight square feet over what currently exists. So we're not talking about the mansionizing anything here. The garage will include a five hundred and eighty nine square foot in law apartment. Uh, the um, the the board did note, as we've said, that we've made um, some significant changes uh, based upon the Historic Commission's reports. Um, I would note, it's interesting, uh, there was some comments from the Historic Commission relative to the deck on the second floor of the house. Um, Eileen has redesigned that, so it's pushed back away. Um, in a little bit, at the end of this, I'm going to show you uh, I a photograph that Louise found of the original Anna Jakes Hospital, which sat directly across the street from this property, where there is in fact a, of course, they didn't call them deck, they called them balcony directly on Broad Street. Um, and there's actually a person standing on it. So I thought that that was from the historical point of view, very interesting. But in any event, the applicant reduced the size of the back deck or balcony, uh, which pulled the railings associated weighted, associated with it away from the street uh, and further than what was originally proposed. Also, the applicant modified the roof design over the garage to address the issues with the Historic Commission also. The, um, I point out also on sheet eight oh two, where you can see the adjacent structure at thirty three Broad Street, which is much larger um, and significantly taller than uh, the proposed garage um, being uh, added to this property. The house itself is prominent on the corner of Monroe and Broad Streets. We're not affecting that. Uh, the proposed garage will sit thirty one feet back from Broad Street. Uh, from Monroe Street, the garage is fifty five feet back. Um, and as um, Eileen described, fifteen and a half feet behind the back of corner of the original eighteen fifty five home. So that garage and addition is being constructed on the back corner um, as much as possible. Um, as to the impacts of the neighborhood generally, again, we're removing a rather dilapidated garage and some interesting additions along the way. The new structures further from the sideline than the existing detached garage. Uh, finally, on a rough calculation of finished floor area as to lot size. So this would be living space, not gross floor area. As to lot size in the neighborhood, the following is true. The property has twenty four percent living area. Uh, Broad thirty three Broad Street has forty two percent. Thirty five Broad Street has forty nine percent. Thirty one Broad Street has forty three percent. Thirty Broad Street has twenty percent. Thirty two Broad Street has thirty six percent. And twenty eight Broad Street has thirty seven percent. At thirty three Monroe has thirty nine uh, percent. So as you can see, um, that amount of living space on a lot, uh, the property is the second least dense lot in the neighborhood. Finally, when determining whether the proposed change to a single family residential structure is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing preexisting nonconforming structure. The board should consider side factors such as according to the ordinance, the size, scale, massing, volume and location of the proposed structure compared to the existing structure and lot and other structures in the neighborhood. And we believe that certainly from those criteria, what is being proposed is certainly not uh, to a greater significant extent, more detrimental than the existing structure. So Andy, if you could go um, to the next slide, I think we can, I just went through a number of those, so if you can go on down. And I've already done that, right? Stop right there, please. So in accordance with um, the section nine B two, we believe the board can find that there is no new nonconformity. And the proposal is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure based upon those um, criteria. Uh, the next uh, special permit we're seeking is uh, an in law special permit. Um, and there are a number of criteria for an in law special permit. And as the board knows, the city is discussing this all the time, how to help people age and live in place and stay in the city of Newburyport to the extent possible. Um, and so we we meet the criteria set forth in the ordinance um, as follows. The in law apartment is occupied by parents, grandparents, children or grandchildren by blood or marriage. Uh, the in law apartment will be occupied by uh, the applicant's adult son and um, now also adult daughter. The dimensional requirements of the zoning ordinance are otherwise met for the attached unit or for the new construction. And in this instance, they are. And assuming we are approved by special permit for nonconformities, um, those requirements will be met. The gross floor area of the in law apartment shall not exceed uh, nine hundred square feet. On new construction or additions to the existing residential structure shall not exceed seven hundred square feet for the in law apartment. The gross floor area of the in law apartment is six hundred and fourteen square feet. That's five hundred and eighty nine square feet of living space in the twenty five foot entry on the first floor. And so it's in compliance. The zoning board of appeals may impose reasonable conditions, um, including the number of spark parking spaces, which there shall be um, additional one space. There is sufficient parking for at least three cars. There's actually sufficient parking for four outside of the garage. Safety, health and building code will be met and they will all be met. The permit needs to be recorded. Um, if it should be granted, it will be recorded. The uh, eleventh and twenty third months following the grant or renewal of the special permit, the homeowner has to certify uh, that it continues to be occupied by uh, those uh, individuals qualified. The applicant will comply with this requirement set forth in the ordinance. Uh, and the um, special permit will expire um, if the certification is not filed or if it ceases, the apartment ceases to be occupied as provided for in the ordinance um, or at the expiration of three years without getting a renewal. The applicant agrees with these terms. Uh, where new kitchen and kitchen appliances have been added, uh, they have to be removed at the within six months at the end of this expiration special permit. The applicant agrees with these terms. The zoning board of appeals uh, may order an inspection of the premises for compliance upon a reasonable request by the uh, notice to the homeowner. And the applicant agrees with this term. Therefore, the applicant meets all the requirements for the special permit uh, for the in law apartment. So Andy, if you go to the next slide. I just thought I would show you, um, this is um, directly across the street. Of course, that doesn't exist anymore. But this was the original Anna Jakes Hospital. And you can see the balcony on the second floor uh, prominent to um, Broad Street. And then on the next slide, please, Andy. Uh, Louise and Eric um, have provided eleven letters of support. I have highlighted uh, where those letters of support come from. Um, and they have been provided to the board, so they are all of the surrounding properties. You'll note, it's interesting, oftentimes um, we do these letters of support and we give them to the board. In this instance, um, if the board has had a chance to look at any of the letters of support, you'll see the little notes that have been written back to Louise and Eric uh, regarding um, how a number of the neighbors are pleased with not only supporting uh, Louise and Eric in this endeavor, but also with the um, look of the um, of the addition. So with that, um, Mr. Chair, I will turn it back over to uh, the board.
Thank you very much for that detailed presentation of on all three applications. So I'm at this point, I'm going to ask for public comment. And as always, we start with uh, anyone that wants to speak in favor. And again, stipulating that I know we have eleven letters of support on record highlighted by that map that we can all see right now. Uh, if there's any additional comment to be made in favor of this application or these three applications technically, please electronically raise your hand.
No hands noted, Chair.
Nailed them all down with the letters, okay? Anyone that is opposed to these applications, uh, please electronically raise your hand.
And we have Stephanie Nikotic.
Good evening, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. Stephanie Nikotic, ninety three High Street. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Because Tom Colter John could not attend tonight as he planned, I am speaking for myself and for the Newburyport Preservation Trust. We hope you were able to read the Historical Commission's DCOD report, which highlights their concerns both about the size enassing of the proposed new construction and the addition of modern features to a historic property on a highly visible corner lot. The applicant's letter to you of August twelfth notes, the applicant has heard what the commission had to say and employ a redesign of the structure. We do not see how that redesign, never reviewed by the Historic Commission, completely addresses their concerns. What is proposed is still a large, not a subordinate addition to the historic building, including modern shed dormers and a second floor deck. And I would just like to note that the beautiful picture of shown of a house with the second story Bowls shade is not comparable to um, to uh, what's proposed for this house. The commission's concern and ours is that the house continue to have the historic neighborhood's characteristic scale and simplicity. Since the plans have been changed, we hope the commission will have an opportunity to review and report to you their comments on those changes. So if that is something that you could make happen, uh, we think it would be helpful to um, the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Nikotic. Uh, is there anyone else in opposition that would uh, like to be heard?
No other hands at this time, Chair.
Anyone else with comments?
Chair, if I could, um, oh, I'm sorry, I'll wait until.
Thank you. Questions are coming in. No one with general comment?
Nothing, Chair.
Before we start questions from the board, you wish to make a comment?
I do, I I would like to comment on uh, Ms. Nikotic's uh, comments relative to having the commission review again. The commission's review under DCOD is relative to whether or not they believe that the structure proposing to be demolished meets the criteria or should be demolished. They added comments for sure about what they thought about the addition. However, the addition um, and special permit for nonconformities criteria for the board um, goes to the the I, the size, scale, massing, volume and location of the proposed structures compared to the existing structure and lot, other structures and lots in the neighborhood and reasonable alternatives to the proposal. So while I certainly appreciate it, and I had mentioned this to the Historic Commission the night of the meeting, that um, the Historic Commission had some concerns about a couple of uh, design issues. That their review under the DCOD, as opposed to the DOT, which is different, certainly goes to whether or not uh, that portion of the structure, which is historic and being removed, should be removed. So um, we believe that we've addressed the Historic Commission's comments. And we believe that we would like to hear from the um, zoning board. And we have changed the design accordingly, but um, would like not to have to go back to the Historic Commission. Given the time and um, review parameters of that commission versus this board.
Understood, okay, thank you very much. With that, we're going to go into questions from the board. Okay, and we'll start with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I have a few questions. I guess the the first, I think, is for his graph. The idea that there's no new nonconformity, the lot coverage calculation is super close. How how are, how did we arrive at that number of 24.9% of lot coverage?
Of that, we we have a, we have a surveyor on the property, Winter, Winter Street L.C. And so they, he does the, Everett Chandler does the calculations for the built works and the changes from existing to propose. So that's a calculation of building footprint of the decks, again, of what was existing and then what was proposed.
So if I could add to that, the definitions, so those are done, all those calculations are done by the surveyor for sure. And the definition of lot coverage versus open space is all set forth in the ordinance. Lot coverage is the percentage of lot area which is devoted to building area. And of course, building then is defined in the ordinance. Open space is a different calculation, which of course is a different dimension requirement.
I asked about lot coverage.
Yeah, so lot coverage is that.
Yeah, so if I could follow up with Ms. Graff, does the the lot coverage number include the covered porch? Or this means maybe you can answer that too, under the, under the ordinance?
I believe if it was under the covered porch, if it has size, it would have to because that's a building.
Correct.
Okay. That was accounted for in Mr. Chandler's calculation?
That's correct.
Right. Okay.
And 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 it does vary. If you were to decide to not screen it, it wouldn't calc, add to the calculation. So the the minute we went to a screen porch of a size that still met our our lot coverage.
Okay. Well, what the plan is, is before the board is for a screen porch, right?
Correct. Yes. And that is the number that was calculated. That has never been a question.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And then on the Monroe Street view, the portion of the proposed garage that you see from Monroe Street is, and I think this is what you stated in your remarks, is wider than the existing dwelling?
Yes, it is. That length is, but it's rotated, if you will. The proportions is is 24 feet in the, on the, say, the garage door side. And that's how I sort of view these two triangles is they're similar roughly in footprint. But from the Monroe Street side, you're absolutely correct. The length of the garage is longer than the length of the front face of the of the main original house, which is why the original elevations drawings that we presented the Historic Commission read wider than the, you know, in form. And that's why we were trying to bring it down to be smaller and in sort of the gabled footprint, if you will. And that's when we brought it down to be roughly roughly 24 wide. So similar to the proportion of the the front face of the Monroe original structure.
24 wide, right?
Sorry?
You said in your presentation, you went from 28 wide to 24 wide. Was that?
Correct. Correct.
And how many cars is this, the garage designed for? I don't think that was addressed in the, I know it has two doors, but do we know how many cars this is for?
Yes, this would only fit two cars. A 24 by 24 footprint is a sort of standard size two, two-car, two-bay garage. And so this is 24 by 28 and the 28 is allowing for the staircase up to the second floor in-law. So that's what, thus why it is a little bit deeper than, say, just for the cars.
Thank you. And another question, one note that was in the Historic Commission's report was a comment about the dormers coming out to the the wall and that not being in compliance with the code. Is that, can you speak to that?
To the code? So this is, this is new construction. So, you know, the dormer was designed on the backside to allow headroom to, for this one and a half story to gain access to the second floor. And and so again, as I just described, the stair is traveling on the back wall of the garage. And that's the side, that's the low end of the roof. Therefore, in order to get the headroom to come up to the second floor, the the plane in which that dormer is has to align with the back wall of the garage. And that's on the rear side. But on the front side, we're stepped back significantly from the edge, as you could see in the rendering, maybe to pop that back, we're stepped back significantly from the front edge of the roof to give that exposure of roof that that is always sort of, sort of much more sort of appealing or such to, and I think that's what maybe Historic is getting at. But given, given the the needs on the interior, on the backside, it was difficult to make that arrangement without, without creeping into the headroom of the stair. So thus, that's why. But we do, while it's aligned on the backside, the dormer with the wall below, we are still proposing roof line break between the two. So it's not a continuous wall for two stories.
I can see that from the, from the Broad Street side, yes. And then final question for me, the materials, can you just describe what the the plating and windows will be like?
Absolutely. So the, the Lingermans love the shingle. We would love to keep continuing with the shingle. It's something they've always loved about the house. The the windows right now are are going to be six over six on the original house and likewise on the proposed. That front dormer that you're looking at for above the garage doors is narrow in proportion, just sort of sliver there. So those are more of a awning, more horizontal in its proportion. But everywhere else is six over six.
Okay. Yeah, that's good. That's a, the rendering, it looks nice from that Broad Street side for sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Ms. Webb, any questions?
Well, as usual, Mr. Delisle is very thorough. And quite honestly, I think the thing that I'm most impressed with about this proposal is the fact that they've really, they've addressed the the structural deficiencies identified in the engineering report. And they've done it largely within sort of the current footprint area, I mean, not, not getting excessively bigger. And and yet they seem to have, you know, addressed their programmatic needs. So I think on a macro level, this looks like they're getting much more than they have now and a better outcome without a large increase of lot coverage, for example. So I have no direct questions. That was more of a comment.
Comments are good. All right. Thank you. Mr. Swan, any questions or comment?
Yeah, um, you know, when I first saw these diagrams read through the reports and things, I was concerned about the massing. So I'm glad there was a good discussion of that this evening. I will say, when I walked around the neighborhood, I was struck by the fact that this is a pretty large corner lot. And I think the way it's been designed, it kind of alleviated my concern on the massing. And I think with the changes you made to respond to some of the same comments from the Historic Commission. I guess my one concern is that deck on the Monroe side. You know, as I walk up and down Monroe Street and on Broad Street, quite frankly, I had a hard time finding any modern decks on any of these historic buildings in this historic neighborhood. The only one I found was further up on Broad Street toward high and it was not exactly something I think anyone would be proud of, quite frankly. So I guess, you know, I think the comment was made earlier about modern features and and that's really the only one that stuck out to me. I think we had a similar concern a couple of months ago in the South End. And I think, I don't know, that's, I think it's a nice proposal, otherwise, you know, given all the constraints. But that's the one that kind of sticks out for me. Thank you. I guess, I guess that's a question. I mean, is, do you really absolutely need that deck up there?
Can you, Mr. Swan, thank you for your comments. I think that they're obviously well, very well placed. Andy, could you go to the next rendering, please? So what I think is, and Eileen, maybe you can get the dimensions about from this. So this is, you know, obviously behind the original structure. I'm not sure how far off of Monroe Street. Maybe Eileen can talk about that. And we've set it back from the edges. So originally, we went to the Historic Commission, we had it out on the edges over the the sun porch, right? So the master bedrooms up there, the idea was to be able to have a space for them to come outside in the morning. So that's why it's there. And Eileen, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit more about the design and actually the the distance.
I can, I can add to that. So the front face of that screen porch that you're looking at is 25 feet back from the front corner of the Monroe face of the original house. Then the deck above that steps back three foot six. And it's, you know, is in total, that 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 balcony is only 10 by 12. So it's really modest in footprint. And if if I'm not correct, actually, I believe one block down on Monroe as you get closer to Oakland, I believe there is another roof deck sort of similar to this. I don't know if if Louise and and Eric can chime in on that. But am I correct that there's one, just one block away as well? So so there are some just in the immediate vicinity. But it's, but it's modest in its footprint, you know, as Lisa said, it's really sort of an, they know this prop, they they've, they know this property, the way the light falls, it's something that they need, you know, given their work schedules, et cetera. That morning time was something that, that on that balcony was something that they were really hoping for. Again, they they've had this property for a long time. They've studied the light. They, again, are going to retire in this home. It's just something that they were really looking forward to.
Yeah, if I could just follow up, I mean, one of the wonders of Google Maps is like, can you walk all the way down to Oakland Street right now and look around for that roof deck? I can't find it.
Carter and Merrimack.
Yep.
Oh, down on, on Broad and Merrimack?
No, 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 Carter and Merrimack. So it's a couple of blocks over.
Okay. Anyway, I mean, the North End's a big neighborhood. I mean, if you have to go a few blocks, I just, to me, you've done a nice job with a drawing, given all the constraints. And I just, I just, I hate, I mean, I live in an historic neighborhood too. I just hate to see roof decks popping up. It kind of looks a little bit like Cape Cod or something. And I just, I, or Plum Island, for that matter, I mean, I get it there. But I guess, I guess, I just wonder about why you would introduce that into a neighborhood where it's such a, it's such a modern feature in such an historic neighborhood. It's just a question. I guess it's a rhetorical question, perhaps.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swan. Mr. Chagrin, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I I would just like to comment that after reviewing the documents and seeing some of the discussions from the Historical Commission specifically about the massing and the fact that the garage and the addition should be subordinate to the main structure. I feel as though they did do that. And I'm I'm quite satisfied that at least that part of the concerns raised, it has been taken care of. So I'm I'm quite pleased with the drawings and the presentation, especially the sketches that show the street views. I think that was important. But no questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chagrin. As far as I am concerned, I just wanted to doubly confirm that the renderings, the one we're looking at here and then the the other one associated with it, reflect the changes that were made after considering comments from the Historical Commission and the D-C-O-D report?
Yes, we got new renderings made.
So these are the new renderings? Excellent. So the garage height that we've seen, the rendering is reflective of the the change that was made. Okay?
Yeah.
One concern that they brought, and it kind of came up with the windows and the materials. So you want to stay with shingles? Does that mean there's a chance it's not going to be shingles?
Oh, no, it's going to be, it's going to be shingles. I mean, you can just confirm that, but there's.
That's correct.
Okay.
It will be shingles.
And with the panes, you know, the, what you said, the six over six, and then with the, with the garage and in-law, is it going to be like plain casement windows or will they have, you know?
The ones over the front, over the Broad Street side, those are going to be awnings just due to its proportions. But it will look like six sash, a single six sash in 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 aesthetics.
Okay. I don't think I have any further questions. So with that, I guess we move to, we will move to deliberations. And I think, well, I don't think I'm going to say that because these are three applications. We'll just, I think we should deliberate each one separately to make it easier for the discussion to stay focused and for the decision to be more clear for everybody. So we start with the first, which is the the D-C-O-D special permit 2020 dash 59, which brings with it its own requirements. And the applicant has has laid out reasons why that they've been met. And I just want to be sure that in our deliberations that we are cognizant of the required findings and that we have access to other information should we need it to make a good decision on this. If we don't feel we're getting the information we need with respect to the demolition of the the old structure attached to the historic structure. So with that said, I just want to open deliberations on the first portion, which is the D-C-O-D special permit. So with that, Mr. Delisle.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Chair, I just wonder if as a point of order that based on the the subsection E of section 28 six, that the SPGA not approve the D-C-O-D special permit without the granting of any other relief? The special permit for nonconformities, I think Attorney Mead also flagged that in her, in her letter.
I missed that.
For that purpose, I wonder, do we, do we talk about, do we deliberate on the special permit first and then go to the the D-C-O-D special permit?
I I don't have a preference. I was just going in order and thought that if if you can't demo it and do what you want to do, then nothing else flows. But
I mean, I don't.
I'm not married to that. I'm not married to the order if that's up for discussion. If if anyone thinks that as a point of order, it wouldn't be a problem. I don't have it. I don't have a problem with that.
This is Andy. If I could just weigh in on that?
Sure.
I I think, you know, it's sort of up to the board's discretion what sequence to have the deliberation. I think it's just a sequence of what the votes should be in making a decision that that will matter in the end.
Like, my thought was, and and I'm up for for input on this, is that we should be, I mean, each one of these is going to need a separate vote. We're not voting on them all as a group, right? So whatever we decide to do, we're having a discussion on on one portion, voting on that, then moving to the next. Is that not how this will proceed? We're not voting on them all as a group, right? So whatever we decide to do, we're having a discussion on on one portion, voting on that, then moving to the next. Is that not how this will proceed?
Mr. Chair, if I could.
Sure.
Mr. Delisle's point and and Mr. Port's point is that uh the board isn't permitted to grant a D C O D without any other thing. So if you deliberated each one of them and then voted, right? So in your deliberations, you're gonna kind of know where you're going. So and then voted on them as a group, at least the special permit for non-conformities and the uh D C O D and then the in-law apartment. That you could deliberate them without voting each one.
Got it. Thank you for that. Mr. Delisle, you on board with that?
Yes, sir.
So we're going to proceed with discussion of them as a group? Or do we start with the uh the special permit for the renovation of existing structure?
I think that the the consensus is we can deliberate them as a as a group, starting with the the D C O D permit. But when we take the votes, we need to take the vote for the special permit for non-conformities first, the D C O D vote second, and the uh in-law vote third. I think that's what I'm understanding.
Now, now I get it. Now I understand. Yeah, okay, understood. All right, so.
So I will start with deliberation on the D C O D special permit.
Fire away.
I think that with respect to uh section three, the re- the required findings, I think that for me, there is substantial evidence in the record that, and this is confirmed by the the Historic Commission, that or enhanced by the opinion of the Historic Commission uh that the the historic building or structure um or the portions thereof to be demolished retain no substantial market value or reasonable use, taking into account the cost of rehabilitation. So for me, uh, on a going forward basis, I can support uh that aspect of uh or that application. And with respect to uh the last part of uh of section four, I think that talks about the advisory reports, but uh Attorney Mead referenced um the uh the existing market value of the the relevant portions of the historic building. I don't think we would need that either. I think that uh I'm okay to support that the um the D C O D special permit. With regard to the special permit for non-conformities, um, I have to say, like some of my colleagues, I was, I was nervous for this application because I was um concerned about the massing and the s- the scale of the proposed addition. And I will say that throughout the the process this evening, um, my concerns have been have been allayed. And I think that with regard to what we have here and how it's been presented by uh Ms. Graff and Attorney Mead, that, you know, um, I think that the the structure is set back enough from um from Monroe Street. And as I indicated in my questions, it looks, it looks good from um uh Broad Street uh that I can support this aspect of of the the application as well. I share Mr. Swan's um concern or um lack of enthusiasm for the for the deck. It seems, you know, maybe that uh a a feature that that maybe really doesn't doesn't fit into the neighborhood um as Mr. Swan indicated. And so I I don't think that the proposed changes will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-conforming structure. It takes away the the rambling um series of additions and and standalone garage and replaces them with, as uh Ms. Graff noted, a more compact structure or series of structures. And with the um the in-law apartment special permit, um, I think that the presentation by Attorney Mead uh with respect to the responses A through A through J, um, I also uh can support that permit or that application as well. With that, I will close my remarks.
Ms. Webb, do you have any comment or deliberations to uh to share with the crowd?
I think that with respect to the D C O D review, that uh the evidence is really overwhelming from the engineering report uh regarding the structural soundness of the structures being proposed to be demolished. Um, so I don't have any issue with that at all. With regard to the uh special permit for non-conformities, um, I share with Mr. Delisle's comments and that on in plan view, you know, this looked a very, I mean, it is very compact as to use Eileen Graff's terminology. And then to see it in elevation drawing, it really comes to life and you can see the massing. But the, I found the conversation very illustrative regarding how how the design was um adapted to address some of those concerns and um making the garage a bit more compact and adjusting the roof line to make it look a bit smaller. Although it's set so far back from Broad Street and from Monroe, um, I think it really accomplishes what the clients are are looking to do there. Um, I do not share the concern about the the roof balcony. I don't have an issue with it at all. I thought it was very interesting to see that historic photo of the former Anna Jakes building, it used to be across the way with the second floor balcony. And then thirdly, the um in-law apartment proposal, I think um all of the points addressed in the uh special permit findings just uh hit every point that needed to be addressed. So I don't have any concern there either. I can support this application.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Webb. Mr. Swan.
Yeah, um, I think my colleagues, they've hit a lot of the key points. I mean, on the demolition question, the first question, I mean, the fact that the Historic Commission isn't even kind of fighting to keep the old structure. I mean, I don't, I don't, nothing has been presented to convince me otherwise, so I'm fine with that. And I I think my colleagues summarized the other aspects of it. Um, I already made a comment about, you know, my concern about the massing until I kind of walked around the site and looked at these pictures in the context. Uh, I, my issue remains the deck. Uh, it's, I just think it's uh it's unfortunate to include this in the neighborhood. And is it more detrimental to the neighborhood to have one of these when it's very hard to find one in the neighborhood? I think it is. Um, and I think it's a shame because otherwise I think it's a well-designed building. Uh, as to the in-law apartment, I'm fine with that. I think it's been presented well. And those are my comments.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Swan and Mr. Chagrin.
Yeah, I'll I'll take them in order again. Um, I agree with the demolition plan, the fact that the Historical Commission is in support of it. Uh, so I I I can support that. As far as the non-conformities, it's a special permit. I I think, as I stated previously, uh, the presentation um took away most of my concerns on the massing to the scale of the uh the new garage with the apartment above. And I and I don't, I don't have a problem with the roof balcony. I agree with Ms. Webb. Um, I I can support that. And as for the in-law apartment, I I I think all the points were made. It seems to address uh requirements, and I think it's a great idea for this family. So I can support that as well. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Chagrin. Uh, for myself, I, you know, not to reiterate what everyone else has said, but yeah, I I think um with respect to the the D C O D, that the fact that the uh the report from the historical commission, Historical Commission, referenced only things that we usually are concerned with, which was size and massing of new construction. And then, you know, inclusion of modern contemporary features in a historic house, you know, that's something that we we don't, you know, we can recommend. I guess we can, we could stick our heels in if we wanted to, but I'm not sure that would fly uh if we wanted to try to do that. So uh D C O D, I have, I have no issues um at all, I think. The the evidence that was shown in the case with how dilapidated um the addition is now. And the the architects or engineers uh report that showed, you know, just how dangerous it was to even try to address it. And it would, to layman, seem very costly. So um since the the historic report, uh D C O D historic report said, no, you know, no issues with the with that add-on uh being of historical significance, I'm not, I am not concerned with that, as my colleague said, so I can fully support that. Moving on to the um special permit, again, the size and massing was the biggest issue and the one that we always have to look at. And then, you know, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And I think that's where I come down on on the 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 deck. Now, maybe it's not perfect, but I don't see it as substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. There have been efforts uh to adjust the size and massing. Um, it it is going to im- vastly improve the condition of what's there right now. And then, you know, clearly with moving on to the special permit for the in-law apartment, um, the applicant has, and counsel has clearly relayed that every one of those requirements will be met. Uh, and, you know, and I can certainly approve that. So you know, and, you know, in going back to the size and massing and the special permit overall, you know, when you have 11 letters and support and they're all the immediate abutters, um, that also says a lot when you're looking at special permits in my mind. So I can support this. So now, the important part, we take the vote in the right order. And I appreciate the guidance on that. Um, so at first, we will be voting on the special permit for non-conformities. If someone wants to do so, it's 2020 dash zero six zero unless I have that wrong.
I'll make the motion. Uh, this is a motion to approve special for special permit for non-conformities for 35 Monroe Street, application number 2020 dash 60.
I'll second it. Rachel Webb.
All right, motion to approve is made by Mr. Delisle, seconded by Ms. Webb to approve special permit for non-conformities 2020 dashes zero six zero. Uh, and I'll call the vote. Mr. Champetti is still absent. Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Swan.
Yes.
Mr. Chagrin.
Yes.
And Mr. Moore, yes, all the affirmative. Um, 2020 dash 60 is passed. Uh, we now move on to uh looking for a motion on the D C O D special permit.
Uh, it's Rachel Webb. I'll make the motion to approve special permit 2020 dash 59, uh 35 Monroe Street to demolish later added two-story addition and one-story sunroom.
I'll second that, Bud Shagnon.
Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Mr. Chagrin um for the approval of um the D C O D 2020 dash zero five nine special permit. I will now uh call the vote. Mr. Champetti absent. Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Swan.
Yes.
Mr. Chagrin.
Yes.
Mr. Moore is a yes as well, all the affirmative. That is approved. Uh, and last but not least, is there a motion on the special permit for the in-law apartment?
Mr. Delisle, I'll make that motion. Uh, motion to approve in-law apartment special permit, file number 2020 dash 61 for 35 Monroe Street.
Anyone want a second?
I'll second Bud Shagnon again. I'll second that motion.
We have a a motion made by Mr. Delisle, seconded by Mr. Chagrin, um, to approve of the special permit 2020 dash zero six one. Uh, and now time, I will take the vote. Mr. Champetti still absent. Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Swan.
Yes.
Mr. Chagrin.
Yes.
Mr. Moore is also a yes, all in the affirmative. All three motions approved.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you all.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Um, before we con- concludes the the formal applications, but I I was asked, um, there's, there's some questions going on uh in City Hall about um when and if public meetings should come back. So this is just a a board discussion, consideration, just be thinking about this. Um, you just general feelings about when or if there should be, we should be moving towards public zoning board meetings, zoning board of appeals meetings. So it's kind of an informal quick conversation before we call it a night, but um I don't see how this can be done personally because of the, you never know who's gonna show up for a public meeting. And if there's, and there still are requirements for large gatherings that would, you know, cause big problems if all of a sudden a large gathering occurred that we weren't expecting. You had to send people home. So that's where I stand. I don't know if anyone else want to chime in on that.
I'm not ready for it. It's Rachel Webb.
There you go.
Mark, was there a way that the uh that the the board could be in City Hall and the remainder of the uh the meeting be conducted by Zoom? Sort of a split the baby type of scenario?
Interesting concept. Um, I think, you know, I think Andy was just kind of, you know, looking to kick around some ideas. That's a interesting concept, just have the board together, but still do still do Zoom while we sit uh socially distant from each other. I don't know if that would fly.
The council did discuss that option with respect to themselves as well. Um, I think there was, there was some debate about, you know, pros and cons of doing a hybrid-type meeting or one in which the board is there, but the general public isn't there. Um, I think that's, I'll I'll leave that question to you. I don't know if the if you feel that communication between board members is an issue, maybe it makes sense to be in the, to try to have in the building with just the board members. But if uh if there isn't a communication problem between board members, it seems to me that it's um, it's sort of extra setup for the custodians and the IT people and so forth. And it's not exactly clear um whether, you know, would members bring their own laptops or um, you know, how how would that setup happen there? You know, we do have wireless in the building, so it'd be possible to do that. Um, but I don't know if you get the added benefit of having public access if it's just the board members.
Yeah, understood. Um, I don't know, uh, Ms. Webb, I don't know what you'd feel about that.
I think it's worked, I think it's working fine the way it is now.
Yes, you're still there. I mean, I don't, I think, you know, personally, I think if we're not, it's either, you know, all of us or none of us in a hybrid model. I think the way and again, I don't want to have this out of turn with with Rob not being involved. And of course, he will be involved, but I just thought we get the discussion going, so. But I think it's either all all in the same way or or continuing to do the Zoom in my estimation. Does anyone else have some input?
Yeah, if I could chime in, Ken Swan. Yeah, I uh, I'm really getting sick and tired of all this, you know, isolation stuff, but on the other hand, I mean, I'd really love to have meetings. I can't stand this, quite frankly. But but it's, although it's nice to sit here with two screens and be able to do all kinds of things, but I, you know, I, my problem is, you know, I have asthma and I mean, I've been trying to, you know, I'm avoiding everybody and it's uh, no offense, Mr. Delisle, maybe, you know, who knows who walks in the room there, you know? So I.
That's a fair point.
So I don't know. It's just, I I hate it. I'd much rather have in-person meetings, but I just, I just, I'm not ready. So I'm kind of with Rachel on this one.
Yep.
That's just premature, I think, you know?
Yeah.
I think that's very reasonable, uh, all reasonable concern. So um anyone else want to chime in before we?
Uh, this is Bud Shagnon. I, I guess if if we were to meet together and. This is Bud Shagnon. I guess if, if we were to meet together and the public was via Zoom, I'm, I'm not sure what that buys us when we take into account the risk. I, I don't know if it makes it a better meeting. I mean, I'd love to meet all of you folks. I've never met any of you, but that's the only benefit I would get out of it, I think, is saying hello.
Right.
Well, I, I think there'd be a lot of benefit to having us all in a room and interacting and seeing each other as we go through these things. But I just, just don't think it's time yet. I hate to say that.
Yeah, maybe it's not time for that yet, but I do agree with Ken that there is, there is definitely a benefit to, to everyone being in a room together as to, as to these meetings for short.
Yeah, I can co-sign to that. We'd better if we could all be there and exchanging ideas, but maybe timing's not right yet. And, you know, I won't speak, I won't speak for Rob, but of, and of course, this, this is just so, you know, Andy can hear and see where our heads are with this and it, Rob will obviously have to have, we'll, we'll be making the input on this as well. So just, we wanted to kick it around a little bit, get the ideas going, get the thought out there and see where we stand. And I think we're all, we're all in agreement that maybe it'd be better to be together, but it's just not the right time. So.
Thank you, Mark. Yeah, we've got some feedback from the other boards and it's helpful to have a little bit of feedback from this board as well. We can get that from Rob as well, of course.
Yeah, make sure.
Make sure we're staying in tune with what the board feels comfortable with.
Yep, very good. Alright, now with that, our agenda is concluded for the night. And if there's a motion to adjourn made by someone, we can, we can consider it.
I will be adjourned.
I'll second it. Rachel Webb.
Right, I think we'll do this by voice. We have a motion to conclude our meeting for the, for the night, made by Mr. Swanton, seconded by Ms. Webb. We will vote by voice. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose, say nay. Excellent. The ayes have it. Meeting is adjourned.